Okie doke. So everyone, check the signature file. And we have-
Right here.
Do it? Sign away?
It's under control.
Oh, all right.
And Diane Lynch is here to discuss an encumbrance of $7,500.
He said if anybody comes in, they'll show up. Oh, okay.
Oh, that we're on Zoom, but-
Yeah. He said if anybody zooms in, that they'll show up on the side like they want them to.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, we're just looking at and talking to ourselves.
You wanna approach the mic or does she need to approach the mic at this point or? Yeah, I guess so. Please.
Come sit with us.
Please come closer.
Unless you're ready to give a speech.
We promise not to bite.
Okay. So I'm here this evening to present to you a purchase order. It's signed by the library trustees, or quorum of the library trustees. This is for a 50% deposit for our carpeting replacement project in the lower level of the library. This is for $7,500, and it would be 50% of a job for decorative interiors out of Laconia in the amount of $15,000 in its entirety. And that does include the vinyl wall base, that's that piece of trim.
Thank you.
I have it.
We'll discuss it, and he'd like to get it done before the, before you reopen. If that's the case still, or can he get it done before then?
Well, so the library is going to be opening most of its hours beginning July. We can actually see this. So how this will then be from 10 to 6 Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, 10 to 5 Thursday, Friday, 10 to 2 Wednesday. That will be most of its hours. This will now be controlled. We're going to go represent here, but we're again, we need to get our decision about the carpeting and what, and the wall base and what. I have to play that tomorrow. We're going to basically be able to sneak in. Uh, July, the first meeting on this, yeah, three, four day install. So you know everyone is waiting for me and run, saying, oh, we need help, because of the cleaning implement. So we are trying to get all this coordinated. So upstairs definitely open full hours, almost full hours, in the middle of this month. And then this is it. It's hard to, it's not going to actually stop the fascins and my next, um, preparations as far as they go. So this is our last, and then we'll be able to. Yeah. Just something to go with it.
Just a good old day, it's good. Many years ago. Um, is there a problem? Oh, okay. So, um, basically, we appreciate the information. And, um, good luck, I guess. Any, any questions or discussion? Covered. Counted for, so.
Make that supply chain ready.
It's everywhere.
Yeah, good luck.
Yeah.
So you'll see that on the next page.
Yeah, thanks. The bench is over here. Oh, you've got AC over there too, right?
Hey, I'm hoping Linda's gonna zoom in. She said, oh my god, I forgot. It's like, okay.
Okay. So, did she wanna do that in non-public?
Yeah, it is non-public.
Okay. So, she's not here though?
Yeah.
Any other items that you wanna bring up?
You wanna, like, go over the list of the board, select board goals, or what's on your plate for 2021, et cetera? See if there's anything that you wanna add to it, or maybe invite certain people. Like, you know. I sent out the, um, notification, the email to our state reps, including Bob Gaida, about the Armory and about presenting a bill.
I saw that, and actually, I wanted to bring that up as well. Okay, I thought we left it, but I was gonna like, you know, slam together like, um, you know, a bill. And then we fly by the reps after that, just to indicate, and then probably give them additional information that they didn't have when you just, you know, sent off that email. Because I know Sally Fellows approached me, and she was confused by, oh, what's the background?
She, yeah. She can come to, to me, to us. That's what I was gonna ask you, if you wanted them to come to a work session, you know.
Not this particular one, because, I mean, there's no point at this point.
No, I know.
Because-
She doesn't have time yet, anyway.
Right. And we got the whole summer to, you know, worry about, or put, put something together. Yeah, I ended up getting a, an email from Joyce before I came here, and was worrying about the property and such, and the conditions on our current one. So that, that probably could've been addressed when we sent the request out, for them to, you know, do a bill, or send a bill out, proposed bill, to them with the background. But, um, anyway. So I'll respond to her on her question, but also for you, and-
And what about the union negotiations, when they start up?
Yeah, that was the one I was gonna ask about.
I sent an email to, I think his name's Chris Kellmer, is that his name? Who's there, who's the union representative, to tell him that you and Zach are the negotiators, so they'll be, and he'll be in touch with you and the union members from the PD and the fire department. But I will follow up with them again.
Are you going to want Colleen there as well as your note taker, so to speak?
Sure. I think so.
All you need. Okay.
Another thing it feels like we should be tracking is what's going on with the Oxbow area, and the, you know, you mentioned Secret Beach earlier. What's going on with that project, how that's proceeding?
That's, we should, well, actually, now, after tonight, we'll have a, a representative from Conservation Commission. Well, theoretically, if, you know, Mike Bouchard gets-
Gets hurt.
So, you know, he'd have a foot both in Planning Board and Conservation Commission, and, you know, that could be reported to Planning Board, who would report to, you know, the board about any kind of movement on, like, Secret Beach and stuff. Actually, if you wanna, if you want an informational update, just request Lisa Donner to come in.
Okay.
She'll be here tonight, she might be able to give you some information.
Oh, if she's here tonight, it might be good to ask.
Yep. And maybe it's like a continuing story or update, so.
Yeah.
And there was, like, a point of disagreement, I guess, with Lisa Donner's perception on the property out on Ten Mountain Highway, the gift. I mean, if you go back and look at all the history, you'll see that you'll pretty much agree with June, as far as the ability of an individual to give a piece of property to a municipality, and then have it in a conservation easement. And the expectation that the town would then be the conservator and maintainer, so the clean way to do it, which is how it was done, is that, like, McGinley would give us the conservation easement, and then we can, you know, conserve it with whatever, and with, you know, two different groups that will conserve. Same deal with our gift to Holderness, I think. That's to be kinda like nailed down, maybe by Lisa.
But we didn't proceed with doing that as a gift, right? We ended up-
I think it was, you know, did we charge them for it? Was it a buck or something like that, or?
We actually paid $25,000 for easement.
Right.
Yeah, well, we had to cough up money for a match.
Right. But there was no cost for us giving them the land.
Yeah, okay.
That was, I think the town felt like they were glad to get rid of it.
But Lisa was concerned about the fact that the-
But who did we actually give it to?
Holderness.
It's the town of Holderness that now owns that land?
We haven't done anything yet.
Okay.
But that's, that was the proposal, I believe.
Okay.
And they were going to put a large easement to the town of Plymouth.
So would that, that land would still remain part of the town of Plymouth?
No. Only under easement purposes. It's actually going to be Holderness's land.
If we do that, didn't, didn't Ratty and tell us they had to, the town of Holderness had to vote to accept it?
You don't-
It could be, but-
I seem to recall that from when we were talking about it originally.
I think that's like the step after, I actually had, like, Larry from PSU-
Spencer.
Larry Spencer, yeah, he came in.
Indicating that, you know, the, the bond or the grants weren't being released yet, and it might be a matter of months. I think that's the first step, you know? And then we, you know, make sure that the properties were, you know, I don't think anyone could proceed until they know that something's only gonna be coming down the pike as far as money. But regarding the, the gift of an easement, you know, that is also for those two properties, oh, the ones that we're gonna look at tonight. Those are, you know, the fam, the family is giving an easement to, conservation easement to Plymouth. They're not giving the properties, and that's-
Oh, it's an easement, not a property.
Right. And that's how we, how we'd want that to proceed.
And that's a true gift. There's no expense associated with that from the town, or the Conservation Commission to the Fawbers.
I don't believe so.
Correct.
That kinda took a sweet time, but I guess they probably had to think, because, you know, I saw the letter was like in January or something. You know, I, we're all excited, actually, back then at the Conservation Commission, to get this property, and that was the first time I actually really see it.
Is there a second page to this letter? Man, maybe I lost it in my paperwork shuffling.
I didn't see one. I only saw one page.
Yeah, me too.
Ends mid-sentence.
And then there's an email.
What are we looking at? Oh, this?
The one from the Fawbers.
Oh.
One from where?
The Fawbers.
Or actually, I guess it's from Lisa Donner?
Yeah.
Yeah, from Lisa Donner. No, it's to Lisa. It's from the Fawbers.
Right.
But it ends with-
Oh, yeah, yeah, it does.
The word "settings."
Settings, and then-
I assume there's more to it.
I'm gonna go look.
Always keep your correspondence in one location.
Yeah.
Gave it to a single page. Like a cover letter.
Yeah. So it's a page that starts with "with views"?
What? No, the page that starts with the Lisa.
Right. And then the second, so "settings."
Is the last word on the page.
And then I have "with views that are in great demand."
Oh.
I do have the second-
I don't have the second page.
Neither do I.
I printed this out. I didn't grab it from my folder, so that-
Ah, see?
Too smart.
It's on that second page. A couple sentences?
Thank you, Lisa.
You want me to read it?
Excuse me.
No. Funding, let's talk about this in person. Current ownership, the field is owned by Bertha Fava, re- refutable, revocable trust, of which I am trustee at a Clayber. Parcel is owned by Wasset Investment, which I am the manager. No, then the attachments.
I'm worried about cut a check to William Bolton, 1.5 million.
They left that part out.
Something like that.
Okay, 250,000 then.
He's sharing.
Yeah.
He's a giver.
I think I need to copy that, too.
I don't see the Energy Commission or Committee on their BOs plate for 2021.
It's, it wasn't, it was defunct. It's still not really active. It's trying to get, get reinvigorated.
At the next meeting in July, if you guys recall, probably three, four months ago, you had a gentleman that came in and spoke about the savings and what he can do for the town of Plymouth, and working with, like, Portsmouth, and there's a House Bill out that just passed. He's coming back in to see the board, or to talk to the board on the, the next selectmen's meeting, I think it's the 12th, or the 11th, whatever the date is. He's offering some general information, so I'm not sure if members of the, former members of the Energy Commission may be interested in listening to that. Who would I contact for that?
Grace, Grace Garvey, yep. Yeah, it's still waiting to be formed, I believe. It's just like a citizen committee now.
Okay.
Citizen group, nothing formal.
Well, that Bartlett Road's very expensive. I don't know why we voted it, but, Jesus Christ.
If only Ted was here to help me.
You didn't have any help that day, did you, Zach?
Mm-mm.
Sorry.
What was I to help you with?
No, you live in that area, you probably want that, too.
Well, he lives farther, yeah.
Couldn't care less about it.
See.
Put that thing back to dirt. Instead of spending a million dollars on it.
Yeah, they should, should, but it's a dirt. She did like Bell Run.
Well, you have an option of saying that to Joey, he's here.
Oh, good.
Actually, on that note, what, what did the warrant say? Repair or pave?
I don't know, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I can pull it up. I didn't know if you knew off the top of your head. You're sometimes so good at that, man.
Yes, I do.
Can you get page two? I did not. It's been worth, page two, Wednesday. Or did you-
I printed it out.
Oh, okay.
Was there anything on the BOs plate that you would add this coming year, or adjust, or?
You know, I think if we have, like, advance notice, maybe we can, like, shoot to do this, um-
And do this at the next meeting?
Yeah, I think so. Linda's here.
Linda's here. Woo-hoo!
I'm not welcome here, I just like-
So we're gonna have this at the next meeting, okay?
I'll stay for a while, I think it's cool.
Yeah.
What they all say. Hold on, Linda, they need to go in non-public.
I make a motion that we go into non-public in accordance with RKA 91A32D.
Okay.
I think it's D.
Okay, we got a motion and a second by Ted. Nearly vote.
Discussion?
Uh, no discussion.
Okay. Hi.
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Zach?
Hi.
Good.
Hi.
We're now in non-public.
Ask about.
I sent an email to, I think his name's Chris Kellmer, is that his name? Who's there, who's the union representative, to tell him that you and Zach are the negotiators, so they'll be, and he'll be in touch with you and the union members from the PD and the fire department. But I will follow up with them again. Are you going to want Colleen there as well as your note taker, so to speak?
Sure. I think so.
All you need. Okay.
Another thing it feels like we should be tracking is what's going on with the Oxbow area, and the, you know, you mentioned Secret Beach earlier. What's going on with that project, how that's proceeding?
That's, we should, well, actually, now, after tonight, we'll have a, a representative from Conservation Commission. Well, theoretically, if, you know, Mike Bouchard gets-
Gets hurt.
So, you know, he'd have a foot both in Planning Board and Conservation Commission, and, you know, that could be reported to Planning Board, who would report to, you know, the board about any kind of movement on, like, Secret Beach and stuff. Actually, if you wanna, if you want an informational update, just request Lisa Donner to come in.
Okay.
She'll be here tonight, she might be able to give you some information.
Oh, if she's here tonight, it might be good to ask.
Yep. And maybe it's like a continuing story or update, too.
Yeah.
And there was, like, a point of disagreement, I guess, with Lisa Donner's perception on the property out on Ten Mountain Highway, the gift. I mean, if you go back and look at all the history, you'll see that you'll pretty much agree with June, as far as the ability of an individual to give a piece of property to a municipality, and then have it in a conservation easement. And the expectation that the town would then be the conservator and maintainer, so the clean way to do it, which is how it was done, is that, like, McGinley would give us the conservation easement, and then we can, you know, conserve it with whatever, and with, you know, two different groups that will conserve. Same deal with our gift to Holderness, I think. That's to be kinda like nailed down, maybe by Lisa.
But we didn't proceed with doing that as a gift, right? We ended up-
I think it was, you know, did we charge them for it? Was it a buck or something like that, or?
We actually paid $25,000 for easement.
Right.
Yeah, well, we had to cough up money for a match.
Right. But there was no cost for us giving them the land.
Yeah, okay.
That was, I think the town felt like they were glad to get rid of it.
But Lisa was concerned about the fact that the-
But who did we actually give it to?
Holderness.
It's the town of Holderness that now owns that land?
We haven't done anything yet.
Okay.
But that's, that was the proposal, I believe.
Okay.
And they were going to put a large easement to the town of Plymouth.
So would that, that land would still remain part of the town of Plymouth?
No. Only under easement purposes. It's actually going to be Holderness's land.
If we do that, didn't, didn't Ratty and tell us they had to, the town of Holderness had to vote to accept it?
You don't-
It could be, but-
I seem to recall that from when we were talking about it originally.
I think that's like the step after, I actually had, like, Larry from PSU-
Spencer.
Larry Spencer, yeah, he came in.
Indicating that, you know, the, the bond or the grants weren't being released yet, and it might be a matter of months. I think that's the first step, you know? And then we, you know, make sure that the properties were, you know, I don't think anyone could proceed until they know that something's only gonna be coming down the pike as far as money. But regarding the, the gift of an easement, you know, that is also for those two properties, oh, the ones that we're gonna look at tonight. Those are, you know, the fam, the family is giving an easement to, conservation easement to Plymouth. They're not giving the properties, and that's-
Oh, it's an easement, not a property.
Right. And that's how we, how we'd want that to proceed.
And that's a true gift. There's no expense associated with that from the town, or the Conservation Commission to the Fawbers.
I don't believe so.
Correct.
That kinda took a sweet time, but I guess they probably had to think, because, you know, I saw the letter was like in January or something. We're all excited, actually, back then at the Conservation Commission, to get this property, and that was the first time I actually really see it.
Is there a second page to this letter? Man, maybe I lost it in my paperwork shuffling.
I didn't see one. I only saw one page.
Yeah, me too.
Ends mid-sentence.
And then there's an email.
What are we looking at? Oh, this?
The one from the Fawbers.
Oh.
One from where?
The Fawbers.
Or actually, I guess it's from Lisa Donner?
Yeah.
Yeah, from Lisa Donner. No, it's to Lisa. It's from the Fawbers.
Right.
But it ends with-
Oh, yeah, yeah, it does.
The word "settings."
Settings, and then-
I assume there's more to it.
I'm gonna go look.
Always keep your correspondence in one location.
Yeah.
Gave it to a single page. Like a cover letter.
Yeah. So it's a page that starts with "with views"?
Oh, the page that starts with the Lisa.
Right. And then the second, so "settings."
Is the last word on the page.
And then I have "with views that are in great demand."
Oh.
I do have the second-
I don't have the second page.
Neither do I.
I printed this out. I didn't grab it from my folder, so that-
Ah, see? Too smart.
It's on that second page. A couple sentences?
Thank you, Lisa.
You want me to read it?
Excuse me.
No. Funding, let's talk about this in person. Current ownership, the field is owned by Bertha Fava, re- refutable, revocable trust, of which I am trustee at a Clayber. Parcel is owned by Wasset Investment, which I am the manager. No, then the attachments.
I'm worried about cut a check to William Bolton, 1.5 million.
They left that part out?
Something like that.
Okay, 250,000 then.
He's sharing.
Yeah.
He's a giver.
I think I need to copy that, too.
I don't see the Energy Commission or Committee on their BOs plate for 2021.
It's, it wasn't, it was defunct. It's still not really active. It's trying to get, get reinvigorated.
At the next meeting in July, if you guys recall, probably three, four months ago, you had a gentleman that came in and spoke about the savings and what he can do for the town of Plymouth, and working with, like, Portsmouth, and there's a House Bill out that just passed. He's coming back in to see the board, or to talk to the board on the, the next selectmen's meeting, I think it's the 12th, or the 11th, whatever the date is. He's offering some general-
He's offering some general information, so I'm not sure if members of the, former members of the Energy Commission may be interested in listening to that. Who would I contact for that?
Grace, Grace Garvey, yep. Yeah, it's still waiting to be formed, I believe. It's just like a citizen committee now. Citizen group, nothing formal. Well, that Bartley Road is very expensive. I don't know why we voted it, but Jesus Christ.
If only Ted was here to help me.
You didn't have any help that day, did you, Zach?
Uh-uh.
Sorry.
What was I to help you with?
Oh, you live in that area. You probably want that, too.
Well, he lives farther, yeah.
Couldn't care less about that.
Is there a...
They're gonna put that thing back to dirt instead of spending a million dollars on it.
Yeah, they should, should have put it to dirt. Treat it like Bell Road.
Well, you have an option of saying that to Joey who's here.
Oh, good.
Actually, on that note, what, what did the warrant say? Repair or pave?
I don't know, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I can pull it up. I didn't know if you knew if top of your head. You're sometimes so good at that, man.
Can you get the page two? Can you get the page two?
I did not.
Let's see where, page two went first. Or did you...
No, she printed it out.
Oh, okay.
Was there anything on the BOS plate that you would add this coming year or adjust or...
You know, I think if we have like advance notice, maybe we can like shoot to do this.
And do this at the next meeting?
Yeah, I think so. Linda's here.
Linda's here. Woo-hoo!
I'm not well prepared, because I don't have that. When I'll stay for a while, I think it's cool.
Yeah.
What they all say. Hold on, Linda, they need to go non-public.
I make a motion that we go into non-public in accordance with R.A. 91A32D.
Okay.
I think it's D.
Okay, we got a motion and a second by Ted. Neely vote?
Discussion?
No discussion.
Okay. Hi.
Aye.
Aye.
Bill? Aye. Zach?
Aye.
Ted?
Aye.
We're now non-public.
Hi.
Aye.
Aye.
Bill? Aye. Zach?
Aye.
Ted?
Aye.
Non-public, we got half an hour to kill.
Maybe we should just state it non-public.
Anybody, bring any cards?
Excuse me.
Was that Andrew?
It's too bad we couldn't start the other ones, too.
You know, actually, that's a good point. When I first joined the board, I heard that the reason we split between a work session and a general session was that the work session would be a little less stressful because we weren't on camera.
He thought he was gonna get dinner.
Was that the argument?
No, that actually, the reason we were doing a work session separate from the regular meeting was that we could...
Roll up your sleeves.
A little bit quieter room, yada, yada.
Yeah.
It was the other way around.
Fifteen minutes later, we, we've been doing every meeting on video, on Zoom, full public participation, which makes me say, why are we still segregating these two things? Why not have one meeting, deal with our work session business right here along with everything else?
You know, so what, what, is there a requirement or a need to have a work session?
There is not.
Does, do other boards do it like that, or...
Only when Paul came, he started the work sessions with, it was like a sit-down, roll up your sleeves and let's just, you know...
Work.
Put stuff, yeah, put stuff on the table and discuss, you know, see where he wanted to go, but you could always do that at any time, right?
Yeah, we, we could.
You can call it a gender item in a normal meeting.
We seem to be more formal during the meeting because, and we read from the thing, "The noon on Friday", you know, the weekend before. So I think, you know, it'd be nice to just be a little more informal about the whole thing and make it one meeting that would start at 5:30, it can be up by 6:30.
Start at 5:30.
Or on a good night, and then on, on a night where we're busy, it goes a little later and we don't have this kinda awkward gap in between.
Yep.
The other thing that happens, sometimes we come right up against the edge of the work session, we're right on the topic, and we're like, well, I guess we gotta table this.
But I'm thinking like, you know, Diane having to come here and say, hey, we're gonna cover this money, you know, like, does she wanna be? I think she, she wouldn't mind, or some of the cases, they might mind being on a general meeting, but they wouldn't mind saying that.
She asked to be, because we were gonna put her on the, let her Zoom in, and she wanted to come here at 5:00.
Get it done earlier, probably.
Maybe.
Agenda-wise, we could do, like, we could just do all the purchase orders at the top because they're usually pretty fast, and then those folks could get out of here if they needed to or whatever.
That's a good idea, too.
I, I think it's a good idea for public, you know, public participation. They're gonna see more of what we do.
That was, that was brought up during, you know, as you explained, that, you know, during the last election.
Get people more involved.
And open. And we say, well, jeez, it is open. Well, yeah, I guess it is.
Call it a work session, it feels less open.
Hmm.
I don't know.
And it's, you know, videotaped, but it's like, you know, put up on PP TV, but not live, so...
This isn't displayed live, the work session?
Tonight's live.
Because it's Zoom.
Yeah.
But is it live on YouTube or just on Zoom?
It's live now, and then tomorrow they put it up. Andrew, can you speak?
I don't think it's...
Both are live?
Oh, both are live?
They're live, yeah.
So we're streaming.
I think that you, somebody's, whoever said that, I think when Juliette was doing it, she didn't livestream the work session, and she did livestream the general session.
Well, we used to have the work session across the hall.
I do remember.
That way, people didn't, I mean, because we did that, people didn't feel comfortable coming to the work session because they're not gonna all crowd into that room across the hall.
Well, it's also very moving to have the board walk into those doors and everybody's sitting here. I'm kidding. That's having ego, yeah.
Some music.
That'd be great. We can get a, you know, a theme song for us.
Somebody compose an alternative "Hail to the Chief" kinda thing.
Exactly, I like it.
Yeah.
All right, so any other thoughts on that, or...
I'm for it.
Okay, and what about like a time?
So we starting like 5:30?
We're starting at 5:30.
And it'll be a regular meeting?
5:30 or 5:00, you wanna get it done early-ish and be home for dinner, or...
Well, we posted for 6:00, aren't we?
We are today, but that doesn't mean tomorrow.
We're talking about going forward.
For today.
So, is, so do we need to move that we're gonna get rid of the work session and then discuss the time, or you wanna throw in a time in there as well?
Yeah, you can throw in a time, too.
Right as well.
Yeah.
All right, so any discussion on 5:00 versus 5:30, or...
I like 5:00.
My only, my only feeling...
We like 5:00.
My only feeling about 5:00 is that if you have people that are working, it's gonna be more challenging for them to get to something.
So the thing is, if I can, if you start the meeting at 5:00, you can say that you, you'll take care of some, you know, work session business first.
Okay.
We can also put someone on the agenda for 6:00 or something and say, well, we're, we'll make sure we hang out that long to, you know, if, if it was a restriction for someone.
Yeah, do like the, you know, get the busy work, so to speak, upfront. Just change the agenda.
And you were talking POs and stuff, I mean, I'm sure, you know, Steve and Joe and whoever wouldn't mind getting out early.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Probably Lisa Donner wouldn't either, instead of Zooming in at 6:00.
Are they coming in tonight, or are they gonna be on...
So you move that purchase orders and stuff like that right up to the drop.
Is Joe coming, or is he... I've sent him a message.
I just saw him.
You did? Here?
Yeah, he was, he popped in and then left on Zoom very briefly.
I didn't see him.
So I make a motion that we combine the work session and the general session, just have a general session, start it at 5:00, and run it as long as we need to get through all of the business that we operate on a bimonthly basis.
Okay, Zach moves, is there a second? Neil seconds, any discussion?
As part of this, I'd love to formally request that we move the new purchase orders, grants, all the, you know, administrivia up to the top of the meeting.
Back office stuff or busy work, whatever, yeah, okay.
Whatever, how you wanna, wanna...
Then when, when do you wanna approve the minutes? Are you gonna still do the minutes first?
Yeah.
And then follow, and then the purchase orders? Follow with purchase orders and other things. Did you say a time, Zach? I'm sorry, I...
5:00.
5:00. You said, thank you.
Ted offered a friendly amendment, I guess.
I think, I think that's a, that's a great amendment, I would agree. Similarly, maybe to address the topic that Ted mentioned with people not necessarily being able to get here is that if we do hearings, you know, because sometimes we do public hearings, we make sure that those are, I don't know, it, make sure those are pushed all the way to at least 5:30, maybe even 6:00, so that we always are, are getting those out far enough.
Right now, they're usually at 6:15, so if you move them to 5:30, it might be.
Or 5:45.
Whatever you... Yeah, 5:45, half hour.
Always fine.
Okay.
So with those adjustments.
Any other, any other discussion? Seeing none, all the favors say aye.
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 All opposed, aye.
Mary?
I said aye.
I wasn't at you, but you're, you're very...
You didn't say it loud enough.
Ooh, that's it.
She, she wants to be here.
So Bill, do you wanna make that announcement then during like chairman's comments or something that we're going to do that?
Okay.
Or the win, Bill.
In order to promote openness, approachability, Bill Bolton says that.
As chair, I've made the decision.
Who generally prepares the agenda doc?
I, I prepare, I give Dawn the information usually, I mean, I do, I do prepare it, but, you know, Dawn gets all the information and puts everything together for me.
In the template, could we, under the committee reports section, could we list the committees? I mean, I know that sometimes we have no report, but it feels like even if we went around the table and said Conservation Committee, no report, that would at least make sure we're kinda keeping up with them.
That's like, we have PSU updates, and we have Town Manager update, and Emergency Management update. He's, he's listed on here, but he has no update tonight.
Oh, yeah?
So we can take his name off of there?
Hey, speaking of...
We actually have PSU update on here twice, which is kinda funny.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, we do.
We really wanna hear from him.
There's nobody there. Oh, yeah, look at that now, wait a minute, where's the...
It's on the second page.
It's there, down here.
So Scott got an email from me, it was in his spam bucket, and said, you know, can you help, or, you know, can you help me or something? I mean, did you, what do you, what do you need? You know, Scott asked me, and I said, well, geez, Scott, I think that's actually spam. Should've left it in your spam bucket, but I'm wondering if anyone else got an email from me saying, can you help me?
You didn't get those $500, I'm saying?
No, $1.5 million.
How come you didn't send me those iTunes gift cards?
Yeah, those iTunes gift cards.
Mine actually says "ham bucket", so, no.
It says what?
Ham.
Ham bucket.
Ham bucket. No, I don't check my spam usually.
I do, because a lot, a lot of mail gets booted there.
Did you guys get that letter from the people in Thornton about the campground?
No. Nope.
I don't know where it came from, it was sent to me.
That was for Perleq.
Oh, it was just for Perleq?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was Bill, that was spam, no.
I read it anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there's another letter, too, I mean...
That's a can of worms.
Oh, it's an easy can of worms, though. You know, it's easy for us because they shouldn't be building an additional campground, 61 things with septic systems and...
Major impact, yeah.
In a flood zone.
Yes.
Well, you gotta see their plan.
That makes more sense to me.
Haven't seen it because they were supposed to have approached DES for shoreline permit.
To leave every non-public at the end of the meeting.
Just found out today.
Wow. Well, the state will handle that.
And you're not going in and...
Because Thornton Planning Board's hearing it.
Yeah. I mean, sometimes things come up.
And they're, you know, they're not gonna ask for...
Haven't you watched the rivers, protect them?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but Thornton Planning Board has...
Sometimes people come on...
We shouldn't say it too loudly, but...
And start talking about things that we have to go into non-public for.
Acceptances of projects that...